Okay, welcome to the Milton School Committee meeting for Wednesday, November 6th, 2019. As is our best practice, please join us in saluting the flag.
...............................................................
Okay, before we start, I just want to make a couple of changes to the agenda. So on, I guess under the superintendent's report, the field trip, is that where the field trip is?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to just present the field trip tonight for the eighth grade trip. We are not going to formally approve it or do a vote. So just make a note of that. Under Finance Chair Craig Head of Finance is going to just give a first info on the FY '21 budget, which wasn't there now. So under Finance Committee, that will be number C. We are going to strike Facilities Advisory Committee report for tonight. And in that place, Dr. John Hurney just scooted in, but Member Everhart thought that would be nice to have just a brief update on policy of what happened.
Sure.
Okay, so we'll put that there instead. So policy will be number eight and C, Budget for Finance. Okay. All right, is anybody here for Citizen Speak? Okeydoke. All right, next, I'm going to hand it over to Superintendent Superintendent's report.
And I'd like to hand it over and introduce Cunningham Principal Jonathan Redden and this esteemed audience and group he brought with him. Principal Redden, do you want to make the introductions and take over the side council presentation?
Thank you. So every year we do it a little differently, and this year we decided to really recognize our work in our PBIS, our Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. And we recognize students for their positive behaviors and giving them cougar paws and different things that we're going to talk about during our presentation. But one thing we do at the end of the year is we really recognize the students that really like modeled that for their school year. And this year, we have our fourth graders from last year who modeled those behaviors and were recognized at our school, at our award ceremony. And I think there's no better force than to say some positive things about the school. So I want to start with them, if that's okay.
That's great.
Very good.
Principal Redden, can you just make sure that they take the mics out of the stands and let the kids pass it around because, and you guys, when you speak into the mics, you won't hear yourself here, but you'll be heard on the TV at home. And that's why you need to speak into them, okay? Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Richard Lee and I'm a fifth grader at Cunningham School.
Hi, my name is Gabrielle Petty and I'm a fifth grader at Cunningham Elementary School.
Hi, my name is Luke Rowley and I'm a fifth grader at the Cunningham School.
Hello, my name is Nicole Caneely and I'm a fifth grader at the Cunningham Elementary School.
Hey Nicole, hon, can you just scoot out a little bit so we can see, like, no, the other way, hon? Yeah, make more of like a line, so, this is the dance teacher in me. There we go. So we can see ya. We just want to see ya, hon. We can't see ya. Yeah, thank you.
We're here tonight because we are the proud recipients of the Cougar Paw Award from last school year. Every year, one student in each class gets recognized for being a hard worker, even if things get tough. The four of us were the fourth grade winners last year because we persevered with positive attitudes no matter what happened. We're proud to be Cunningham students, and tonight, we'd like to share some of the best parts of Cunningham with you.
At Cunningham School, we celebrate our differences. This means that we notice that we are not all the same, and we like it that way. We are lucky because we have a program called Celebrating Our Differences that we've participated in that helps us understand some differences like cerebral palsy, autism, and being in a wheelchair. Learning from those experiences and just from being a student at Cunningham Elementary School has made it easier for me to celebrate differences. We have learned that everyone deserves to be treated with kindness, and that being kind makes us feel good, and everybody else here too.
Being respectful, responsible, and safe is another important part of the Cunningham School. Students at Cunningham earn red cougar paws like this if they are showing expected behavior anywhere, like at recess, in the halls, or in the classroom. The kids love earning paws, and it has definitely made a big difference. Every Monday morning, one student in each grade is called over the loudspeaker because they've been especially respectful, responsible, and safe. And we all look forward to that, to start our week off.
Overall, being kind is the most important thing at Cunningham School. We celebrate kindness in many ways, like making a big display that the whole school works together to make every year. We also have a buddy bench, and it helps kids make friends when they're feeling lonely or bored. We've all used the buddy bench at some point, and whether you're asking someone to play or being asked to play, it feels really good to use it to promote kindness. We hope you enjoyed learning a little bit more about our awesome school, and that you're inspired to be kind, celebrate differences, and be respectful, responsible, and safe every day.
Great.
So again, we can think of any four students that can say great things about the school and their experience here at the Cunningham School, and they are also prepared to take any questions you may have right now.
So I just want to say that I love the message that all four of you gave, all really important, but also love the fact that you guys are so confident that you can get up with a microphone and speak in front of this group of people as fifth graders. That's very impressive, so thank you very much.
Yeah. Anyone else have questions or comments?
So are these, is be kind, celebrate differences, be respectful, responsible, and safe, is that sort of the general motto of your PBIS strategies at school?
You can take the microphone if you...
So like Luke showed you guys, the red cougar paw, that's basically like every Monday, every morning. Every grade in our Cunningham Elementary School will show either respectful, responsible, and safeness. And all of us actually got a cougar paw, and I don't know if they would like to share.
Wonderful.
That's great.
Did you share one thing that you did that earned you a cougar paw this year?
I walked quietly in the halls.
Nice.
I've helped a friend.
Great.
I stood up for someone.
Nice.
I've also helped a friend when they needed help, like, if they're stuck on a math problem.
That's great. And can I, I just want to ask with, with the PBIS program that you guys have in your school, do you as fifth grade leaders, do you also sort of work with the underclassmen to exhibit, to demonstrate and exhibit what that is? Because you have that fifth grade leadership program at school too, do you?
So at assemblies, we have videos that show how, that we show to the younger grades how to be respectful, responsible, and safe in the hallways and in your classrooms. Oh, just a bunch of like the fifth graders and like, and teachers too.
Mm-hmm. That's great. Yeah, Dr. John, you?
Principal Redden stepped on my lines.
Lastly, I want to say like, who took the great photo shoot there? You guys look like you should be on the cover of a magazine, I think. It's pretty snazzy. That's excellent. Thank you so much. Great job.
All right, at this time, I'd like to call the side council up. As you can see, we have a large group with us here tonight. We're very excited to welcome, we only had a couple meetings, so I want to start by prefacing that. But as you can see, we have new faces up here. John Redden, Principal of the Cunningham School in the eighth year, Assistant Principal, Mrs. Butler, and Curriculum Coordinator. We have a parent representative, Richard Riccardi. We have another parent representative, Scott Farrell. We have Annie Hsu, another parent representative, all brand new this year at the Cunningham Site Council, so we're excited to be working with them this year. We have kindergarten teacher, Ms. Amory Quinn. We have Madam Moore in our second grade French teacher. We have Ms. Amy Zoll, who is our third grade teacher. Again, exciting work. We've only met twice, but the energy has been great, very positive, and we already have a ton of ideas that we're learning to build on from the great things that we're going to share with you here at the Cunningham School. The way it's going to work is I'm going to start and just give you an overview of some of the, the things that make up the school, along with a lot of the data, and then they're going to help me, us talk about the goals that we have for the Cunningham School. So at the Cunningham School, we are pre-K to five. This is our second year with the pre-K, bringing us to 637 students. As a community, we're proud of our diversity, our achievement, and our growth. And the big piece of tonight is going to be around our inclusive practices and the way we collaborate and work together to make sure we provide the best learning experience for all of our six hundred and thirty-seven students at the Cunningham School. You're going to hear a lot of talk about collaborative classrooms, the co-tots, and we are going to speak about our preschool programs as well. So before I go back to the co-tots and the collaborative practices, Mrs. Butler's going to say a few words about our preschool programs.
So we're proud to house two district-wide preschool programs, one of which is a half-day integrated program, the other is a substantially separate full-day program. And I know I can speak confidently on behalf of the Cunningham community when I say we couldn't be more fortunate or happy to have welcomed the preschool to our school last year. It really is a special thing to watch the teachers collaborate amongst themselves and the educational assistants that work with them to make sure that these three and four and five-year-olds are getting the instruction that they need. The instruction is differentiated, there is a tremendous amount of collaboration with families and amongst staff. So we really are happy to have welcomed the preschool to our, to our community. A little later tonight, you'll hear from Mr. Farrell, who has a student in our integrated preschool program, so you'll be able to hear a little bit about the parent perspective as well.
So this is my eighth year here at the Cunningham School, and over those eight years...
No, you, you can...
And over our eight, those eight years, we've worked with the MFE, the district budget, grants, our PTO to really outfit all of our classrooms with technology, with different resources to support all the students that are in those rooms. And when we talk about Cunningham Collaborative Classrooms and our co-tot classrooms, a lot of times, everyone thinks of sort of like special education, what special education is. And we really worked hard as a school and as a community to recognize that special education's not a place, it's not a room, it's a way we're providing services for all students. And in these classrooms, we can provide the tools that they need due to the support we've received over the last eight years. So although this is our first time with our collaborative classrooms this year, and we're excited to see the impact it has on all of our learners, we also recognize that certain learners have unique needs, and it's always best to really try to meet those needs in the classroom environment. And that's sort of the work that we've been working towards, that's what we're going to share with you tonight, and looking forward to it.
So I am proud to say that I was the actually, the first co-tot kindergarten classroom in Cunningham seventeen years ago. Thank you, Mary Gormly. And then three years ago, I was asked again to be the co-tot kindergarten teacher. And when I taught co-tot kindergarten seventeen years ago, my students were pulled out all day long for the required speech or occupational therapy or reading support. They were leaving my classroom in and out all day long. And three years ago, when I went back to the co-tot model under the guidance of John and Bernadette, a whole new way of thinking has arisen. And students are all supported in the classroom all day long. As Mr. Redden said, there's no differentiation between, you know, a regular ed student or a student that needs special supports, they're just all in the classroom. And academics aside, we make children better people by exposing them to different ways, different learners and different ways of life and celebrating each other's differences. The co-tot model makes children better people, I really believe. I watched it happen, children supporting each other. And to piggyback on what Bernadette says, in terms of teachers and supporting each other, I think that the co-tot model and the collaborative model in our school makes us all better. I think we all, you know, we all become cheerleaders for all of our students. And you're right, with the preschool coming last year, it just made sense because those kids were going to come to us either in the collaborative model or in the co-tot model. So having them there and watching them go through the school is just, it made an awful lot of sense. So the inclusion model, I think, is a home run for us, lucky for us as educators, and really also wonderful for our students as well.
To be clear, the way we did it, we repurposed the, specifically our special education staff, we repurposed their positions so that they're meeting the needs of students in the classroom. So it wasn't hiring new people, it was really creating opportunities through the schedule for teachers to not only co-teach, but also co-plan, collaborate, work with educational assistants to really provide this environment where all students can be successful. So we recognize that that's our best practice, that's our, that's the work towards inclusive practices that we're doing, continuously doing so that students are successful.
So you just heard about a few of our programs, and you've heard the word collaboration come up a few times already, and we're only on slide four. But really, we do pride ourselves on collaboration. It's something we are striving for, whether it's collaboration amongst staff members in the same grade or across grades. You heard a little bit about collaboration from our students, how fifth graders make videos that are then shown to the whole school. We're really trying to infuse collaboration into a lot of what we do. And that also is, is true for collaboration with families. We feel that at Cunningham, we have a really welcoming environment in which we encourage families to come in and talk to teachers, to talk to Mr. Redden and I, or to come in for volunteer opportunities. It's something that is just a part of the fabric of Cunningham. So on the screen here, you see words that Cunningham staff members thought of when they heard the phrase "collaboration" at Cunningham. And the words that are the largest are the ones that came up most frequently. So you can see things like teamwork and unity, learning, supportive. And I'm so proud to see those words because those are things that we really value at Cunningham and that we've been working towards for years. But as Amory said so eloquently, we, we are so lucky to have been given support and the structures and the creative thinking to really maximize the experience of our staff and of our students at Cunningham.
To expand on that, hello, everyone. To expand on that collaboration theme, we have the co-tots and we have the collaborative classrooms, but we all work together at the school, all the teachers plan together, we get advice from each other, we come up with ideas together. The students work together really well, and we work in small groups and pairs often, and they learn how to problem solve, they learn how to respect each other's opinions and ideas. And you can see that across grade levels. I might consult with Caroline or with Anne Marie or with a fifth grade teacher about a student or about an idea that I have. And it's really makes Cunningham a really great place, that everyone works together so nicely. And that includes the administration, of course, and the lunch aids and the educational assistants. We often consult with each other about a child. And all working together, we're really truly meeting the needs of all the students and making sure they reach their full potential.
And I think Mrs. Zoll's going to speak to this later, but she's also a teacher that's recognizing that flexible seating options are really promoting this practice, not so much that students, you know, have so many choices, but the way that tables and the sitting is arranged, it's almost ensure, it almost means that we have to be successful at this sort of collaborative group learning in small groups and stations. And that's the work, and that's the goal of sort of setting the classroom up that way. And she's been very successful doing that for the first time this year, and it's catching on. So now she's the second teacher doing it, and we're looking forward to expanding that beyond, you know, the classrooms moving forward. So I know V is going to do a data presentation with you in the, at the next school committee meeting, but I wanted to share our accountability data and share some highlights and things that we're working on because they really drive our school goals, starting with our eighty-two percent. So the points that we receive from, towards our targets, we received eighty-two percent of those points, which puts us in the ninety-first percentile. We're going to come back to what that means, but just the short, short of it is, we are doing as good or better than ninety-one percent of the schools in the state of Massachusetts as far as meeting our targets. So that is great news overall, and I want to share some of the highlights from the So as you can see, in fourth grade, the students are meeting or exceeding expectations, and ELA has increased from sixty-nine percent in 2017 to seventy-seven percent in 2019, from fifty-eight percent in 2017 to eighty-four in mathematics in grade four. So that's a great news story. In grade three, our English language learners are in the ninety-fifth percentile in ELA and eighty-fourth percentile in mathematics. And I promise not to read through the whole presentation, but these are just such great things, I really want to make sure you understand. So again, that means our English language learners, our students in third grades are in the ninety-fifth, doing as good as, or better than ninety-five percent of the students in ELA in the state of Massachusetts, in the eighty-fourth percentile in mathematics. That is something that was great to celebrate, shows the work. It's not one person doing this work, it's the, even our support services for English language learners are in the classroom, co-teaching with the teacher as well, and it shows that it's, has been successful. So again, this pre-collaborative model. And grade four, our achievement percentile with students with disabilities, we're in the ninety-fifth percentile in mathematics and eighty-third percentile in ELA. Again, as good or better than ninety-five percent. And our high needs group in grade four was in the ninety-second percentile, so our high needs, low socioeconomic status includes our ELLs and includes our students with disabilities. So these are all like great news stories that really jump out at the success of what the teachers and the staff are able to do. Eighty percent of our fifth graders met or exceeded expectations in mathematics. And our lowest performing subgroup, so this is a group that's identified by the state, exceeded the target in mathematics. Our female students in grade five performed in the ninety-second percentile in science and technology. Again, really great, ninety-two percent doing as good or better than ninety-two percent of the female students in the state of Massachusetts. And our male students were in the eighty-sixth percentile. Again, another great news for our students in grade five. And as you know, in grade five, we don't have grade four data, so grade five's always a unique cohort taking it every single year. So we always hope that, expect that they do well, and this just shows that they're really performing well. Students in grade five had a mean student growth percentile of fifty-nine percent, and in mathematics, forty-eight point three, I mean, and forty-eight point three in ELA. And again, all of this data puts us as meeting eighty-two percent of the total points we could have received, which puts us in the ninety-first percentile of all schools in the state of Massachusetts. So that is a great news story. I was able to share this with the staff, and again, really go into detail, and I know V will be with you soon to really break it down even more, so. But using the data, we want to really focus on the areas of need that were also present there. So in grade three, students who are meeting or exceeding expectations in mathematics don't, aren't going in the direction we really want it to be going in right now. So we are excited to be working with our instructional coaches, including Brian and Maura, and planning and looking at how we are meeting the needs of students in grade three. But overall, we're doing a curriculum review as well. We have had our program for many years, it's been successful, we've had great results with it, but we want to make sure it's the right program. We're doing a lot of work around ELA, so this is going to be the first time in a while that we've looked at the math program and make sure it's what's best for all of the needs of our students. And on top of that, we're using a new data platform that allows us to sort of look at assessments and put them in a program. But, so if it's MCAS or if it's internal assessments, it's all going to one platform where teachers and administrators can monitor and see if any intervention that we do put in place is actually having an impact. So we don't have to wait till the end of the year, wait until the summer to sort of get data back. We can make these decisions during the school year and make sure that what we're doing is actually having gains with students. The percent of students in third grade who are meeting or exceeding expectations in ELA is steady. We don't want steady, we want growth. So we want to make sure that we're, every year, even though it's a new cohort, we want to make sure that they're trending upwards, not sort of plateauing. And that's why this work with the, the data will be very helpful, but also the Alexia screener, screening that the students engage in this year as well. And our students with disabilities, although they performed well compared to other students with disabilities in the state, they did not meet the target that was set for us in mathematics. And that brings us back to our new model, our collaborative model that we're doing around teaching. Again, it's not, okay, they need to pull out and get something different or special, it's more that we need to make sure we are meeting their needs right in the classroom and really thinking about all the interventions and things that we're doing in the classroom and tracking progress to make sure that they are making a positive impact on their learning around mathematics so that we can meet their goal. And it's great that the state sets such high goals, and there's no, so huge gap between where the state wants them to perform compared to non-disabled, their non-disabled peers. That's great, that means we're doing such great work, and it's going to be that much, you know, more important for us to make sure that they're performing like their non-disabled peers. And that's a great challenge that we're up for, and I'm excited about meeting moving forward.
So next, we'll go through our three school improvement goals that we set in 2017. So our first goal is all about English Language Arts, and it reads Cunningham staff will implement a comprehensive English Language Arts curriculum to teach literacy that is data-driven, cross-curricular, and research-based. So again, this goal was proposed in 2017, and we'll wrap up kind of at the end of this school year. And the district in Cunningham has made tremendous progress towards this goal since this goal was proposed. So we have undergone a curriculum review with Dr. Noni LaSalle, the Alexio team, and a literacy leadership team, which was comprised of both administrators and teachers. And it really was exciting work to really dig down deep into what practices we were using at the time and think about best practices. We wound up selecting a curriculum called National Geographics Reach for Reading, which is research-based and which is cross-curricular, so we have been implementing that now for a few years. And we continue to fine-tune that instruction through professional development, through, as Amy mentioned, collaboration amongst staff members and common planning time and looking at data. But this year, we're really focusing on fine-tuning instruction so that we are making choices intentionally with data in mind. So one thing that is new for us all this year is Alexia Rapid Literacy Screener. We've gone through one round of screening for K to five, actually, K to eight in the district already, and we've met as a school and shared those results with every single staff member that works with students, whether it is an educational assistant, whether it is the art teacher. Every person at the Cunningham School knows about our data from that literacy screener. And we've also met in small groups and grade level teams to look at that as well. And we're making intentional instructional decisions about small group work in literacy based on data, which we have been doing in the past, but now with these new structures and this new screener, we're really able to fine-tune that practice. In mathematics, we planned to deliver challenging, developmentally appropriate mathematics lessons that actively engage students, emphasize depth and breadth, and develop skills in mathematics such as critical thinking, problem-solving, decision-making, and communication. So I think the key here is that we continue to work towards the depth component of this. So similarly to English Language Arts, we're really starting to hone in on data and work with small groups of students and make some intentional shifts in our instruction so that every single learner is getting what they need in a targeted... that every single learner is getting what they need in a targeted fashion. So one thing we're doing this year is we're deploying our math coaches in a little bit of a different way. In the past, they've been a really great resource for any staff member that wanted to take advantage of them and they would push into classrooms and, and help plan with teachers. And now we're really focusing on one grade level at a time so that they can work intentionally with one particular grade for a really concentrated amount of time doing planning with that team and with individual teachers, looking at the data, going in for lessons. So it's, we think that this will pay off in dividends. And as Principal Redden mentioned, we are in the first year in a planning phase of a curriculum review for math. So we're excited to kind of get, get our feet wet and start thinking about that as a district. So that's something we're certainly undergoing this year in the beginning stages. Caroline actually has experience as a second grade teacher who's working with the math coaches right now as well.
Yes. So just to speak a little bit more to a teacher's perspective, I think we've been seeing a lot of success with, through our collaboration with our math coach, Maura Middleton, who's just fantastic at what she does. So I just personally am noticing that through this coaching cycle, it's benefiting myself, but also my students. We're able, my sort, myself and Maura were able to plan together, were able to differentiate instruction together, and she's able to model some lessons for me. And I'm able to receive feedback on my own teaching practices. And so I'm just looking forward to seeing more success along with the work with the math coach and my second grade team.
Our third goal is all about, about student behavior. So the Cunningham School will create a school-wide systems of support that include proactive strategies for defining teaching and supporting appropriate student behaviors. So we're really excited about this goal. We, the district and Cunningham have also made tremendous progress towards this goal since it was proposed in two thousand seventeen. I remember sitting with the site council and talking about this goal before PBIS was something we, we knew about it, but we didn't quite know about it. We knew we wanted to know more. And since that goal was proposed, PBIS is a part of the fabric of Cunningham. The students know exactly what we're talking about, the staff, every single staff member in the school, and I mean every staff member, knows what it means. And really for the students, it means that they're earning these red paws because they're demonstrating expected behaviors. But it's really shifted our mindset and how we interact with students and we're shifting everything towards positive and recognizing expected behaviors. But we've, we still have work to do. We participated in a training over the summer and identified two coaches for Cunningham who have been very active this year in getting ideas out to staff and keeping the momentum going. We developed an action plan for Cunningham that was shared with the staff and that we're chipping away at. And we've also, in the effort of collaboration, expanded our PBIS team to include educational assistants as well because oftentimes educational assistants are at recess with children or at electives with students. And we really want the voices of all different staff members at the table. So that's something new that we've implemented this year. And something we're thinking about more is how we're collecting data for this. So right now, we're using incident reports through this platform called Email Me Form. But we're not totally convinced as a school or as a PBIS team that that's the best way to do this. So we're continuously thinking about that. What we really want is to be able to look at where things are happening so that we can focus on those areas and really drill down what's going on so we can add extra supports or just think creatively about ways in which we can support students to demonstrate expected behaviors all over the school. So we're, that's something we've identified as an area that we at Cunningham want to focus on, but I think we've made really nice progress towards this goal too.
So this is what we were told we could be our sort of brag slide, I guess, is what's unique for Cunningham. And again, I spoke at length about the collaborative classes. Again, it's just the way that we think of the supports and things all students need and how we could make that happen within the general education setting. And then as Bernadette spoke about, making sure that we're closely watching the data, making sure the things that we're doing really are benefiting students. And again, more recently, we even learned that we were able to support students that we usually would have to wait till January to talk about our extended learning program. And we're able to do that now earlier thanks to online platform and support students who may need it based on data that we have from MCAS and from internal assessments earlier than we would typically be able to, which is another great thing moving forward.
So we have a large site council and we only have some of it here, but everyone here has something that they're really passionate about that they'd like to share with you. So we'll kind of just pass the microphone along. Some of this will be parent perspectives about their experiences at any particular area of Cunningham. And then the teachers have some things that they wanted to bring up as well.
Thank you. My name is Richard Ricardi. My daughter Reese is in third grade at Cunningham. She's a student, she has Down Syndrome, so she's in the special ed program. So we, we had sort of a tricky start. When Reese left preschool, we looked at the different programs and we started out at one of the other schools and it was an integrated program. And it came with some challenges. We found ourselves up at the school quite a bit and dealing with some stuff and it just, it wasn't working out for us. So midway through the year, we, we came over to Cunningham. And it's just been, just an amazing experience. It's just, the staff there, they're so caring and understanding. I found the biggest difference to me is how incredibly proactive the staff is. It's, they're not reacting to things Reese does. There are challenges with kids with disabilities. I think everyone would know that. And Reese comes with her challenges. She likes to, she definitely likes to see how far she can go with her teachers and she likes to poke and prod a bit. And, but the teachers are amazing. It's not like, okay, Reese did this, now how do we respond? It's their constant, constant communication with my wife and myself and how do we nip it in the bud? If something happens, it's, you know, it's not swept under the rug. We know about it and it's how are we going to deal with it? And that's been the biggest change. And it's been such a positive experience. And our main objective coming out of preschool was always, integration was number one to us. I felt more than academics, what would make Reese grow later on in life? It was going to be integration. How was she going to, you know, get along with her peers? And from that, and, and they understand that. Everyone, you know, they all understand that at Cunningham, that she's integrated and she's made a number of friends, she's invited to parties and she's just, it's amazing. It's been such, such a positive experience. And, you know, and it's not, you know, all rainbows and lollipops. They could tell you some Reese stories, read their stories with Reese. But like I said, just the, just the proactive approach has been so amazing. It's, they're on top of it and constantly, two steps ahead. You know, they can kind of see from week to week where Reese is going. And it's like, okay, we see what's going on and how can we nip this in the bud now? And it's worked and it's really, really worked. And with that, and as I said, integration to us was more important than academics. But I understand the importance of academics and with this approach, the academics are coming. I mean, you sit with her and her reading and her writing and her speaking and her math, it's all coming. And it's just, it's, I think it's because of the proactive approach. So from ours, you know, perspective, we couldn't be happier. And, you know, say everything happens for a reason and we ended up at Cunningham for a reason and, you know, I couldn't be happier. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is, pardon me, Scott Farrell. I have two children, a six-year-old and a four-year-old. They both went through the integrated preschool program. My daughter's currently in it. It's an incredible program for many reasons that, you know, he just shared with us. But the integration of a foundation from a child learning at the age of three and then going on and seeing that there is no difference with anything. They don't know anything else but being a part of that and setting up the platform of going to school where even if it is, the only downside I'd ever say by the program is it's two hours and that's like gym and a coffee, but that's my choice for doing that. I just think the integration's more important. But it was, it's been so great for both my children to do that. And then to reflect on the PBIS part of it, which I'm a huge component of as well, I've never gotten a red paw, but John tells me if I keep my head down and focused, we'll get there. My son struggles at drop-off greatly. And if he was older, he would probably be beyond frustrated that I just shared that with all nine people watching. But he gets positive reinforcement because it's a fine line about parenting a child where you don't know if he's being stubborn and you don't know at six years old, is he really anxious? Is he super nervous? And we're all hyper-aware and do we jump down and say, oh my gosh, or can we be like, all right, no, but you got to learn. And some points that's part of growing up and developing is that little guided push. And Bernadette and John, they're there, Ms. Quinn was Grayson's teacher, they are there to support him and nurture him through in a positive way, but still with a, sometimes, I don't know, forceful's like a bad word, to the school or whatever, but to get him going where it needs to be and they need that positive reinforcement to go forward, instead of just reversing it and saying, no, you're doing wrong, this is it, you're not fitting into that square cookie cutter mold, that it should be normal, you should be able to get dropped off. So just those two aspects are just some of the many things that I love about the school and the town schools as well.
Hi. My name is Annie Shu and I think I have a very different experience because I am new to Milton. We, our family moved from overseas in mid-August. We moved from Taiwan, which is exactly on the other side of the world. It is a small tropical island. So my kids are, you know, going shopping for clothing right now. But my kids actually grew up in Silicon Valley in Northern California. And so we've been part of the independent school system there. And then they transferred to an international school in Taipei. But my youngest one, so I have two daughters in Cunningham, in third grade and fifth grade. My youngest one actually went to the local school in Taipei for two years. So she's completely fluent and did the whole, you know, went completely local. So coming back here was such a daunting transition for the family because, you know, as parents, you just want your kids to feel comfortable and happy. And this just seemed like, we're like, how are we going to make this transition work? And it's been, you know, it's been really bumpy. We've, we're in temporary housing and moving into a home. And also I have had to go back to Taiwan to take care of some family things after the start of school. But the one stable thing they've had is school. And from the first, even before the first day during the welcome students kind of session they had, at our previous schools, it was, they usually assign you a family to welcome you, but it was never the faculty. And to make a connection with Mr. Redden and Ms. Butler, even the day before school starts, made my girls feel so much more at ease. And then I was able to communicate, well, this is Ms. Sol, my third, my third grader's teacher. We communicated via email before the first day of school because Violet, my youngest, who had gone to the local school, was so nervous. And Ms. Sol shared with, shared with me that she had taught overseas in Asia. And so I shared that with Violet and that was like an instant connection for her. And so it ended up being like the best first day of school they've ever had. And I was like, whoa. So, you know, as a parent, it was like, you know, like that day at dinner, they just kept talking and it was like, they were happy. And that's all, you know, you just want your kids to be happy learning, right? That's all you could ask for. And then, like I alluded to earlier, we, we had a family issue come up and I had to take my youngest daughter back to Taipei with me for a few weeks. And I went to speak with Mr. Redden about that. And really all he wanted to know was how he could help and how the school could help. Because it was yet another transition after this huge transition. And we kept connected with her third grade class through Ms. Sol. Ms. Sol passed on emails between us in Taipei and her classroom here. And then when we came back, she had like these cards waiting for her. And the transition was like seamless when she came back. So another like, phew, you know, for me as a parent. But while I was away for almost four weeks, my husband was single parenting. And he had to pick up Charlotte from school early one day. And he was like, I pulled up to the curb and Mr. Redden is there standing with her. And she's got like this giant tiger paw magnet in her hand. And for, for Charlotte, and she's been, you know, through quite a few different, well, she's never actually had one-on-one time with a principal before. And like on FaceTime with me in Taipei, she was like, Mr. Redden like waited with me for dad. And, and you know, like, it just like gave her another level of comfort and trust with adults at school that she never had. So I would have to say this experience has been so pleasantly surprising. And also I think a measure of, you know, how well, you know, teachers and faculty make students comfortable and feel welcomed is how well the children, how comfortable the children feel at school to like really put themselves out there too, especially only after, you know, a couple months and, you know, they're new, a new country for them. And my, I can say, you know, with a hundred percent, you know, that my kids feel so comfortable at school. My daughter submitted an application for the ACER program, which she never would have done anywhere else because she, she is kind of self-conscious. But I know it's because she feels comfortable at school. She's doing after school, she joined the after-school math CAS thing, and that's not her forte, but she's done it. And then Violet just can't stop talking about Plymouth Plantation or, you know, witches because that's their read aloud. And, you know, she's like, I wanted to do, you know, the morning announcements, you know, and, you know, the asked for volunteers, I wanted to do it. And she did it, like, I think it was yesterday, right? And she can't stop talking about that either. So, so as a very, very new family, and I'm sorry I went on too long, we've, we felt so comfortable and so welcome into a community none of us are from and could not be more different from where we came from. But we feel at home, so. Thank you.
So when we were deciding who would speak about which slides and it came time to decide, I said I really wanted to be on the bragging slide because I have been at the Cunningham School longer than anyone here. And I can honestly say that morale in our school is truly at an all-time high. I feel as though base, because of the programs that we have and because I feel like we all work so hard for our students and also for our principal and our vice principal, because as you all know, when you work for someone that you respect and that respects you, you really want to do a good job for them. My first principal was Dory Corshen. And I loved working for Dory Corshen, so much so that when she would ask me to do something, I would thank her for asking me. And I feel the same way about John Bernadette. I feel as though they respect us and they really demand us to, or ask of us to do our best with our new programs. And I think that we all stand a little taller because we work a little harder to do the best that we can for these children. And so I'm grateful because I have seen a lot of different phases of the Cunningham School and I think we're really the best. I mean, I, we can always improve, I'm sure, but right now I really feel as though we are in such a good place and we all work so hard and together to do the best thing that we can for all of our students. So.
I would like to add that Dory Corshen was my first principal too, as a child, as a Cunningham student. To add to the bragging slide, I loved, I loved Cunningham so much that I came back. So just to add again to, as in Reese said, the morale of the building, I think our, the PBIS program has really instilled in the fabric of the school, just a culture of kindness. And as teachers, if we are noticing the positive behaviors that students are exhibiting, we're also modeling we're also modeling for them how they should be treating each other. So as one of the student speakers mentioned, you know, I earned a red paw for helping my friend with my math, with his math problem. What I've noticed as a teacher is just students are continuously kind to one another, which is just such a joy to see, you know, on top of all the success that we've talked about in reading and math. It's just really nice to see that if somebody's pencils fall on the ground, everybody is rushing to help pick it up. So just that, that makes it a really great place to be every day.
Yeah, and I think that kind of leads into what I was planning to talk about, which is that all of these things we've talked about, they're all for the children. And it cycles back to the beginning of our presentation. We were all so proud of them. And two of them were in my class in third grade and I was teary-eyed because I'm just so proud. And it's because of their hard work, but also the work of everybody at Cunningham. Because our number one thing is to send them off to Bill Fish over there with confidence. And you saw that tonight, and kindness. And I really feel like it's definitely, it's so obvious at Cunningham that we're all about kindness. We're all about being good citizens, working hard, learning. And, you know, as the kid said, respectful, responsible, and safe. And I think, as Anne Marie said, everyone working together, modeling for the students, it's really paying off. And it makes us all very proud.
Thank you. So thank you for listening to us. That's our site conservation presentation.
Anyone have comments or questions?
Sure, I'll start. So thank you, Principal Redden and Assistant Principal Butler. This was an excellent presentation. It was wonderful to hear your, the progress that you've made and how happy your staff and your parents are. I was thrilled to hear about the success of the PBIS program from all of its facets. I was thrilled to hear about how integral, integration in the special education model is and how effective it has been for your families. With regards to the ELA curriculum, I was wondering if you could talk about how, how the sort of en masse rollout of that over the past few years has, if that has been positive? And if so, in particular, if you can give a few examples of that? And how that has sort of played into your MCAS scores results?
I think that something unique about the way in which we rolled out the Reach for Reading program is that typically, I think, the way that districts do this is that a few grades or a couple of grades roll out something. What we were really fortunate to be able to do is to roll this out for K to five at the same time, which part of you might think that's kind of crazy and the other part thinks that's brilliant. Because what happened was teachers banded together and schools banded together and started to really have to plan together and bounce ideas off each other and say, hey, I tried this. How did it go for you? And let's talk about that lesson. So it developed this sense of camaraderie amongst our staff at Cunningham, I think. And if anyone who's using that or has gone through the implementation wants to chime in, I'm sure you're more interesting to hear from than me. But I, my perspective is that it went really well. I think with any new curriculum, there's absolutely a level of anxiety and wonder about how this will be different and how this will feel for the students and for the families and for the staff. And there was absolutely a level of anxiety as it began. But I think that whole mentality of we're all in this together and we're supporting each other helped with that. I think that it will pay off in our data, both internally and in MCAS. Because we now have so many more resources in the classroom through the program. So there are individual readers, there are books that teachers can use for small groups. Every classroom is outfitted with a classroom library. It's like a dream come true. So I think that we will definitely see that payoff in the years to come.
That's great.
Thank you. And my follow-up comment to that was, it's so from my perspective here, it seems like it was a very effective rollout. And it's nice to hear that that is sort of actually on the ground, the case. And as you go through the process of the math curriculum review, I hope you take, I hope we all take that lesson and bring it with us because it seemed like it was a very effective model and method of deploying resources. So, thank you.
May I add one thing to what Ms. Butler was speaking to? In the history of the Milton Public Schools, we would always, for the viewing public, implement a program, one grade at a time. So if you had a second grader and we started at first grade, we were always one year behind. And the children, the students missed out. But I have to recognize the school committee and prior school committees. My phrase was, they mortgaged the district. And they made a huge commitment to what Ms. Butler said, K-5, to implement this. The Milton Public School teachers analyzed the data, analyzed different programs, and chose this challenging program and implemented it K-5. And it is a huge success. Two quick notes. This program is, the data from this program is driving where the reading teachers, we fund what children they're servicing. So this is a year of assessment and the third year, the three-year implementation. And in the first year, when we do our learning walks, we went to the Tucker one morning and there was a science, a PowerPoint up on science at nine o'clock. And so I said to the group I was with, we're lucky to get to science at two o'clock or 2:30 every day. And the program is rich with science and social studies literature. And science lessons are part of the reading, the integrated program. So from what we have seen in the data, the feedback from staff and administrators, Ms. Sol, would you agree?
I would. And what you said was something I was thinking as you were speaking, is I teach third grade and the students in my class have now had that program in first grade and in second grade and now in third. And their comfort level with the program is really phenomenal. And my comfort level, of course, is also better than it was when I first started it. And so you really see the payoff now. They're so used to the format, they're used to the materials. And we kind of hit the ground running and they know exactly what to expect and they get excited about a lot of the materials. So, yes, I do agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you for the wonderful presentation. And I particularly wanted to commend you on the PBIS strategies. Because that's a word that people toss around a lot and they talk a lot about that in social, emotional learning. But to actually implement it successfully and have a plan of implementation over time is the key to the success of the program. And that the students were able to articulate how, what respectful looks like, what safe looks like. And that each of them had a different example of that speaks to how well you've implemented that. And the videos, that's just brilliant. Because that really is an example for younger children to see what it looks like. So I commend you for that. It really is a wonderful program. And I'm wondering if there's like a family engagement piece, if you, if it goes home at all? And in what form does that happen?
Well, I can speak to the red cougar paws that were, the students were displaying. And Ms. Butler is wearing them actually. So those go home with students every day so they're able to go home and explain to their parents, I want a paw today, or I earned a paw today for walking safely in the hallway or for cleaning up my table at lunch. So, you know, that's another way for students to go home and really brag about what they've accomplished in the school day.
And we really depend on the students to talk about it when they get home. So that's why they lead all of our assemblies around positive behaviors. And they're part of the videos, they're part of the planning. Like we really want them to own it so that it is a conversation that's happening. And then, of course, we share all the PowerPoints and the things that we do with the students. But, you know, we want it to come a lot from them so that it's not sort of us telling them to do these things. So that goes right back into the old practices that we don't want, so.
And I feel like we're improving on it all the time. The idea when we started, the paws stayed in the classroom. So, and then we all talked about it and we said, well, that doesn't make any sense because they're staying in the classroom and we're having like, which class had the most paws? But it was a much better idea for them to bring them home to their parents. Because then they had, it was a sense of ownership, look what I got today. And you would think that they were gold. I mean, they're little red pieces of paper, but they run around with them. So, you know, we're constantly improving what we're doing with them as well.
Well, I can say, a lot of stuff that gets sent home, you find in the backpack a week later. But the red paws, nope, that you walk into the room and that red paw's out and you're, you know, you get a full explanation of why you got it.
That's wonderful.
It's pretty exciting.
Well, I'd like to say, but I'll try to keep it brief. First of all, thank you for bringing the students here. I mean, obviously, it's what it's all about. But it's also wonderful evidence, proof positive, that what you're doing is absolutely on point. They're very impressive. And I was also extremely impressed, in spite of the fact that you are stealing V-Boos Thunder next week, that I also incredibly impressed with the scores. That's just amazing, amazing work to hit that. And I was also struck, being a teacher myself, with the comments that Anne Marie made about morale and that Amy was making about collaboration and working together. And that's, that's a, along with the students, that is the definition of creating a real community at Cunningham. And you're all to be commended for it. Anyway, thank you.
A member, White?
I just want to tell you that, you know, I found this very presentation really excellent and very moving. And I was very inspired by not only the parents' voices in terms of their own experience, watching their children grow in school and also all the teachers and what it feels like to work at the Cunningham School. So as we get ready to advocate for next year's budget, this keeps, this is what it's all about. It just keeps us going so that we can advocate for all that you need.
Member, Mary?
Thank you again for this wonderful presentation. And I also was very taken by all of the different perspectives that you shared tonight from the students up through the parents and the staffs and teaching staff. And what is clear to me also is this community of people that are committed to caring for one another, but also committed to lifelong learning. And I think that the teachers are modeling for children how important learning is. That even though you might have been teaching for 20 years, you still have something to learn from a colleague who may be newer than you. But that there's a culture where that's happening. And, you know, bravo to you all, John and Bernadette, for your leadership. And this is wonderful.
Yeah, I just, just to want to echo what all my colleagues said. But the thing I kept thinking about as each one of them spoke was even, even a conference that I went to a couple of years ago, which we're going to tomorrow, the annual Massachusetts Association of School Committee conferences. There was keynote speaker, you know, back then about social and emotional learning, right? And how with all of the, all of the work and all the intervention and all of the academic curriculum that people work on, if a student is really not in the right headspace to learn and, you know, then their success is just not going to be what it could be. And, but I also think that's for us as adults as well. And I think that you guys exemplify that, that your PBIS is making these students want to be at that school, feel comfortable to be at that school, want to be, you know, enjoy it, not have the anxiety. And they're just in a better place to be willing to learn and work hard. And it seems like you all the same way, working with each other as staff members because your environment, that your environment there is one of support and collaboration and, you know, supporting each other as a staff and not whose third grade is better or whose class has more paws or whatever. And I think that that's probably like the key to why you guys are just overall killing it, as the kids would say, killing it. And just thank you for everything that you do for the Cunningham School and for our district. And to please keep it up because it's great. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we'd like to invite up, the irony, we could have invited up Principal Fish as a Cunningham parent. Yeah, he has many roles in the town of Milton. And Vice Principal Janice Mazzola. I suggested to Principal Fish, he spoke, went to the CPAC meeting before this meeting. And I said, Janice and Bill, you don't have to come. And he said, I'm a Cunningham parent, I'll, I want to be there for the presentation, so.
It is.
They're on their way out.
To the work that is going on in that school, it's feeling something, and having been, this is our seventh year there. You can see and feel that what's going on over time. So just hats off to the work that's going on there. So I wouldn't have missed this. So typically, this information would come to you in the form of seeking the committee's approval at a later point in time. However, given some of the changes that we're looking at for this, the Washington DC trip, we wanted the committee to be knowledgeable of our plans and the rationale for those plans. So the DC trip is a wonderful opportunity and a great tradition for our eighth grade students. And in the spirit of continuous improvement, we've been looking at ways to maximize the experience of all students who participate in this trip. Jake Smith, one of our eighth grade socialized teachers who could not be here tonight because he is a graduate class, has really spearheaded the efforts to look at and to propose some revisions to the DC trip. So I'm just going to share with the committee, if you don't indulge me, Jake's thoughts and insights. He writes, "For the past three years, Pierce has traveled to our nation's capital to enrich the educational experiences of eighth graders. Feedback from students is generally positive in regards to the trip. But in regards to any other feedback I receive from students, much of it centered around the fact that they felt as though they were sometimes rushed, hurried, or the trip schedule felt like it went at a frantic pace. After garnering this feedback, as well as some similar feedback from the teachers that shat on the trip, I set out this year to find ways to make the trip feel a little less frantic overall. One of the options was to expand the trip to a fourth day, which allowed for some more quote-unquote "in-D.C." time and less traveling time via bus, which is a total of approximately 20 hours of travel time in the span of the trip. This allows us for a better space out of activities and experiences to ensure students feel they have the time to absorb and connect to what they're seeing. The other option that was looked into is whether flying rather than taking the bus was possible. Flying would eliminate the need for adding a fourth day, but still give more of that in-D.C. time for students and shat ones on the trip. It is my hope and the hope of the school that this experience will be enriching, enlightening, and enjoyable for all students who choose to participate. I look forward to hearing feedback from students, parents, and others as we move forward toward this trip and trips in the future in order to make this the case every year." So as Jake noted, the most notable differences in the way that this trip is being shaped as in past years is that students would fly to DC rather than to drive. There, as Jake mentioned, there's about, in the three days of the trip, there's, when you take the bus, it's about 20 hours of travel time. So to be able to drive, we looked into what would it look like if we were to add the day? And it was actually, add a fourth day of the trip. It was actually more expensive to add a fourth day and to take the bus both ways than it was to keep the three-day span and to fly. Obviously, either option would be more, would be more expensive. So last year, the cost was about $785 per student. This year would be just over $1,000, it was $1,039, which is, which is a $250 difference. And that, it's important that we put that out there and be, and be open and real about that. At the end of the day, it does raise, you know, we want to be cognizant and sensitive to issues around costs and access. Because we want every single student who wishes to attend the trip to have the opportunity to do so. So we, we will look in, there will be fundraising opportunities provided, similar to what's been done in the past, which have come by way, you know, following Dr. Spalding's lead, candy sales, movie nights, raffles, as well as direct donations. The vendor that we're going through, Nation's Classroom, will provide us with one full scholarship for every 50 students who pay. So that will likely result in anywhere from four to five fully funded trips for students of the equivalent of, you know, close to $5,000, which is outstanding. So again, we want all students to want the opportunity, to take the opportunity. So as we would in other situations between Janice, Dr. Fitzgerald, myself, and the guidance staff, we'd be working with families to ensure that they're knowledgeable of the trip, they're knowledgeable of the opportunity to, for scholarship and for fundraising to ensure, again, that as many students who wish to attend this trip are able to do so.
Okay, I have a question. Maybe Dr. Spalding would answer this, I'm not sure. About how much, you can answer it one of two ways. About how much was raised with the Yankee Candle, the...
Yankee Candle, the movie nights, the everything, so that, what was the sort of reduction per student, if you know that, or maybe you know it?
Are we talking for this year or in previous years?
In previous years.
Oh, I know.
I'm happy to answer. So the, there were kind of two simultaneous fundraising efforts. One was exclusively dedicated to scholarship. So even when Yankee, when we did Yankee Candle, for example, individual students, everyone could participate and individually earn some credit. We also sold, you know, I was the seller, sold to staff, sold to parents who wanted to purchase and support that effort, and that money all went to the scholarship fund. So for students not requesting scholarship money, between Yankee Candle, we did mixed bags, we did candy bars, a few different mixtures of things. I would say probably the highest amount that someone defrayed the cost was probably $150. That had more to do with the choice of, or the degree to which they committed to participate in the fundraiser. And then it's a little, you know, maybe it was only $20 or $30 that it defrayed the cr- there were opportunities to, but again, it just depended on how all-in they were in defraying the cost via fundraising. The, in the way of scholarship, we raised last year, it was probably around $11,000 through a whole variety, all of the things that they just listed. And so students accessed scholarship funds, or families accessed scholarship funds by submitting an individual application to me, and then I had a conversation with the family and, so that we could figure out, you know, what the need was and what they felt like they could do, and that kind of thing.
So full and part.
Yep, yep. It depended on the family circumstances and that kind of thing, so.
Yeah, I was happy to see that the scholarships that the company, Nations Classroom, is offering can be split, that it doesn't have to go five full scholarships, but that you could give a half scholarship and do 10 or whatever. Yeah, so those were my questions. Thank you.
Anybody else have questions?
Have we used this company before?
I have used this company before. So I ran the DC trip in Norwell for a lot of years. I actually went 20 times to Washington DC.
I have such confidence now.
And so I've used. I explored, by the way, that last year was my final year, and then I showed up in Milton, and Karen said, oh, by the way, did you know that we do a DC trip? I said, oh, dear Lord. So I have been using this company in Norwell for about the past five or six years. We've used a number of different companies. I found this company to be the best that we've used so far, mainly because, number one, they're located in DC, so they are right there on hand for you. Number two, they're a smaller company, they're large enough to support the number of students that we have, but they're small enough that you get some pretty good individualized attention from them.
Okay, great. I just want to, I know we use a different company for the international travel that high schools do, it's the same one all the time? I was just curious. I don't remember this one.
I have a couple of questions. Will, in the payment plan, I know previously when it was still only like 785 or so, that you could start in the, like, the late fall and do the payment plans, which I think is very advantageous. How many payment plans will you have with it being roughly over 1,000 now?
So the way the company does it is they do, when you register online and you put your credit card down, they do monthly withdrawals from the credit card.
Oh, okay, even monthly, that's even better. Yeah, okay, all right, that's good.
And should that point we'll bring, if it's convenient to you, at our next school committee meeting. So school committee members will have a couple of weeks, but for your very reason, we'd like to get final approval at the next meeting.
Yeah. Sooner or better for that.
For that, that's huge. And then where, when they go, where are they staying? Are they staying outside, like in Virginia or Maryland, like they sometimes do, and come in for the hotel, or are they staying in DC for a hotel?
So the plan right now is we are staying, and this is not definitive yet, because they're kind of still waiting for us to get approval, obviously, but the, we are staying at Tyson's Corner, the Sheraton Tyson's Corner, so it's just outside the city.
Just outside, yeah, yeah.
It's a halt down 66.
I know, but they have to do that because it's cheaper.
Right.
Hey, my daughter goes to GW when I go to visit, you know, they're not, not.
Yeah, we've, and I've done both in the past, too. Last year, we stayed at Tyson's Corner, and it was the ease with which we could get in and out of the city was great, because I've also stayed far outside, too, which I would never do that, because it's such a, it's a waste. You end up on the bus 45 minutes getting in and out of the city every day. And so this was a great location.
And so because you're flying and not taking the bus, when, are you flying into Dullesy, flying into Reagan?
So we don't have the definitive flights just yet, so I'm not sure if we're flying. It'll depend on what we fly.
Okay, and then will you have, like, once you get to the airport, will there be, I noticed I was looking through it, that it had dedicated deluxe motor coaches. Is it going to be buses, or is it, what, how are they getting around the city?
Yeah, so it's the same buses, we'll have the same buses that we normally take down, but they pick us up at the airport.
Okay.
Oh, I think Janice might be a little weapon there on these eighth-grade trip stories.
I will say that my 20th year, last year, I flew. They took the bus, I flew, and I will say that it was worth it. It made the trip much more enjoyable.
I have one last question that I forgot about. It says in Jake Smith's summary of the trip, that the chaperone ratio will be approximately 1 to 12. How far will that be exceeded at any given time, approximately 1 to 12?
I would assume that 1 to 12 will be the highest.
Okay, all right. Great, thanks.
We also, we expect by flying, it'd be easier to recruit.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I was telling, I was telling the superintendent, I have a, I have a close friend who teaches at Needham, and they're on their eighth grade trip now, and they left today on the bus, and they're going, coming home, so they, they're coming home Sunday night, and they have Veterans Day off to recuperate because of all the hours on the bus, yeah. She's an eighth grade teacher, so. This is, you used to fly, when I was in PTO leadership, you used to fly way back when, and then it kind of faded off the trip, and then you resurrected it on the bus. But if this works and if people can pay for it, I know I'll never take a bus or drive down to drop my daughter off. I fly and put storage there, because I'm not doing that drive back and forth from Boston, it's too long. So this is great if it works. You can see, you know, more, more, more things, definitely, it's great.
So we'll bring you back for a quick approval at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Any questions the school committee has, they can call Bill or Janice directly.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Thanks for sticking so late, too, with the other presentation. We appreciate it.
Next, I have, as I mentioned to members, I used your school committee goals and our strategic planning goals for the goals of my, for my two-year, working towards my two evaluation two years from now. So we'll post these tomorrow, once you've approved them, and for the viewing public, just like the teachers have a, an evaluation process from the Department of Education, so do superintendents with professional goals, student learning goals, and district improvement goals. So as I said, so that we're all working in the same direction, we, I want to recognize Assistant Superintendents Pavlicek and Spalding, who helped me with my goals, and I will share these goals with the leadership team and the teachers, as all of the principals and staff have to come up with their goals.
Does anyone have any questions on it, or any wordsmithing, or anything on any of these that they've read through?
I think they're great. Particularly like the district ones, the cultural competency, I like the efficiency and effectiveness of the interventions in the KDA reading screener and the Tier Two intervention. That's really solid, targeted, and that's really very easy for teachers and principals to sort of connect their own, you know, because some of your goals have to be connected to the school improvement plans and the district goals, and that's easy to connect to and be a part of, so.
I just wanted to piggyback on member, but with Cunningham just being here and talking so much about the reading program, on this goal, when you say that you, that the effectiveness of the reading interventions by establishing a KDA reading screener and ongoing assessment system that identifies students in need of a Tier Two, so is that something that you have to create outside of Reach for Reading, or is it in collaboration with what they have with some of their ancillary products, or how does that?
It's very interesting that you mention that, because that's what Assistant Superintendent Spalding and I have been working on with the principals and the reading teachers all week. And so we're working with, I keep referring to Dr. Noni LaSalle from the Harvard Graduate School, and the year of, this is the year of assessments, and they're perfecting the assessments, and they actually, a team of 20 or 25 reading teachers and support people screened the children, and at one and two, we're using the assessment data, targeting those reading teachers to them, and doing this band of assessments three times during the year.
But do you, but do you, my question to?
Oh, they're using the Reach for Reading materials.
So I was just saying, does Reach for Reading, because I mean, I looked through it a while ago, I know when we bought it, but it's a core, you know, it's a core basal, you know, program, and it's not an intervention program per se, but does it have, like, intervention, does it have, I guess my question is, does that program that you would use have an intervention, you know, supplemental part of it, you know, like an intervention reading library that's leveled, like a leveled reading part that you would use?
So much so that the sped teachers, again, for the investment, we had to actually spend some of our sped money for the program, for those parts of the program.
So it does, so it does come with, like, more, more specific intervention, you know?
And what has become, you know, again, this third year, today it was very poignant, a child needs remediation. You don't want to bring, introduce another program into a child who's having, who's trying to master the existing program. You know, if you're hearing from the reading teacher, you know, you're hearing from two different voices, you have to use the same materials, whether you pre-teach them or reinforce with the materials. So we're use, we use the existing materials.
Okay, good.
And can I just ask, how does the Lexia reading screener, is that part of this tier, this, or that's separate from? Part of, yes? Okay, great.
Okay, well, then do we want to, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Members, Mary?
Yeah, I just want, I think these are wonderful goals, and I just appreciate how much they're aligned with our strategic plan. And, you know, as Steve Paxia would say, we have all the ships heading in the same direction. It's wonderful, thank you.
And you've been rowing that ship.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else?
It's great.
Then I'm going to make a motion that we vote on these. Does that, can I have a second?
Prove the goal?
Second.
Yeah, to approve them. A second, okay.
I said it, that's a second.
Okay. It's already, it's only nine o'clock, eight to 30. Daylight savings is still catching up.
Yeah.
All right, so all those in favor then? All right, unanimous. Thank you.
Next, Chairman Varela had asked a few meetings ago for all classes at the middle and high school that had enrollment over 28 students, and then at a subsequent meeting, you had asked for us to delineate which of those are the core subjects. So really, for me, the summary, and correct me if I'm wrong, Assistant Superintendents, but at the Pierce School, the classes that have 28 and over are the electives and the French humanities.
The French immersion.
Right, and French immersion, but right now, we're able to, none of the English, math, science, social studies classes, but again, a member, Varela, has mentioned from her own experience, at the high school, there are classes that have 28 and over that are in the cores.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Did I say 26? I believe you asked for 28 and over.
Yeah, but there's 26 core classes that have 28 and over in them.
Yes.
Yeah, and 16 of those 26 at the high school are language classes, where you're cutting down on students of, you know, time to be able to speak in a class, which is, you know, it shouldn't, shouldn't be the case, I mean, I think we all agree on this stuff, and English classes, where kids are writing quite a lot, or would be writing quite a lot, and I don't know how teachers are going to keep up with that if you've got 29 kids in a class.
So this high school list was?
It was eye-opening for me, it really was. And shows me even more than I had thought how much we're on the brink when it comes to enrollment. I mean, my focus had been certainly on the elementary level, because that's where we're having to find classrooms, and that's where the space needs are crunching, and we're having to get, you know, extra teachers just to deal with those students, but the problems are, they go from K to 12, clearly, and we shouldn't, we shouldn't have classes that are, that are this size, especially not in the ones that, in my opinion, in the ones that I named, so.
And to echo what Dr. Craig had said, I have to say, as a current high school parent, that in a rare moment, because of some, a little bit of the restructuring that you did, I've set up my son's English class this year, has 16 kids in it, and it is, I mean, that's, that's low, you know, but even if you're 16 to 23, and it's, it's like day and night, because freshman and sophomore year, you get 28 to 32, very good teachers, but to Dr. Craighead's point, as far as, you know, writing these papers, getting feedback when they have to correct how many sections of 28 to 32 kids, and if you, you know, need that feedback and to improve, and where do you go, you know, it's, and it's everywhere. So it's, we have the space to be able to put the staff with additional teachers, but these class sizes are high, and we need additional staff there.
Agreed.
Absolutely. I mean, I understand, like, you have the high school classes. Yep, that goes without saying, like, but look at that. I mean, I don't know how at the middle school they're managing all these electives with 31, 32, 32, 32, it's just so many.
Sixth graders, too.
Do you even have rooms big enough for that, like, with desks and, like, that's got to be quite the.
Well, there's not even enough room for the sixth grade at the Pierce to all sit at the tables at lunch, or at least they couldn't. I don't know if that's, that's changed, but it's, we're just, we're jam-packed everywhere.
And I, and at the middle, I know that you said that it's, you don't have the math and English, but, but, but foreign languages, they do, there's a Spanish class here that is at 32, French immersion, 32, 30 for another French immersion, a Latin at 31, and, and your foreign, and your, and your language, when you get to the high school, when you're adding up your GPA, that plays a part in it. So if you're in band or choir, it doesn't add to the GPA, but whatever foreign language you're taking does. And so just like, just like the teachers at Cunningham were saying, that we want to have the kids ready to give them to Principal Fish at the middle, we want to have those foreign language kids. And foreign language is one of our, you know, gemstones, that all of our foreign, our Latin, our Spanish, and of course, our French, is stellar compared to other districts. So that needs to change, too.
Yeah, I mean, you think about, like, if you go into college and you are in the, if you are a student, you're in the College of Arts and Sciences, you know, you, language is a requirement that you take in college. So any strength building that you do in, in our wonderful program here, from, because we have it in elementary school, too. It just goes on and on. At 32, I just, that blows me away. Sorry.
I don't know how you get practice in conversation.
Yeah, that blows me away. Well, I guess you have small groups of each other, but if you don't actually know how, yeah.
How long are the periods in the high school?
Forty-eight.
I think they are-
How long are the periods in high school?
In high school? They're forty-five?
We have the block.
No, it's the devil, devil periods.
With the new schedule.
With the new schedule.
Yeah, but the new, no, but the new schedule makes the block, the block period is lessened, because it's like a half an hour, it used to be the long block days, but now you have block day every day, but it's shorter, here we go.
It's out in the hall.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's out in the hall, that was nice, big visual in the hall, I like that.
So, oh, so you do have the blocks.
So, for those, if you don't mind, Chair Varela, for those watching at home, sixth grade humanities, sixth grade French Immersion, Spanish C at Pierce, all have thirty-two, Latin, French Humanities, French Humanities, thirty-one, I'm skipping health and et cetera.
Yeah.
Thirty, Spanish, French Humanities, French Immersion, French Humanities, twenty-nine, Latin, grade six writing.
Grade six writing, twenty-nine kids in that class.
Yep, grade six writing, another section of twenty-nine, grade six.
Yep.
Yep.
So, to Dr. Donahue's point, we post these, they'll be all posted tomorrow, all the handouts.
Yeah, and that includes your goals too, right, for the goals and, and the class sizes, yeah.
So, thank you Chair Varela for requesting that information, because it was eye-opening.
And our, and our thanks to the teachers and administrators for mitigating this, because they're, they're doing a phenomenal job.
And the hours, so happenings, we put out a blog tomorrow that will have everything in it.
Members Maron.
Well, I'm not on the Finance Committee, but are we asking for more teachers, do we just classify?
Yes, we are.
Great, and that's coming up?
That will be coming up soon.
Excellent. Yes. And I'll address that a little bit in my Finance Committee report, can I just piggyback on the happenings, I know that Superintendent Gormley is going to post what's going to happen, but I just want to talk about what happened last week with the Addams Family production, I just want to say that we've been going to Milton School productions for years at the Pierce and the high school, and I was completely and utterly blown away by the Addams, the quality of the acting and the singing and the choreography and the blocking and the, and the set, and it was just amazing, the Addams Family production, and I hope that many, many people in Milton got to see it.
And the makeup, right?
Oh, the makeup was great, too, yeah.
And just to echo that, I mean, the, the leadership of the, I'm just going to echo that too for happenings, that, this great things happening with the theater program, that the parent community has just formed a new 501(c), they call themselves the Backstage Boosters, to continue to fundraise, they have a great leadership team in their third year, Kevin Black, Preston Perro, and Kathy Encantido, I forget her last name, is she the correct one, they have done Pippin and Les Mis, and now The Addams Family, and they just keep getting better, and the, the production value is so high, they are now overseeing the entire theater program, which will be a fall musical, two one-acts in the winter, and another spring musical for the first time this year, which they'll be doing newsies, and the one, and the one-acts, one of them will be directed by their team, and the second will be, will be a student-directed, the kids have to put in a proposal as to who's chosen to be the student director, and one of the acts will go into the Massachusetts Drama Festival, so they're just doing a great job, and I got to commend them.
I, I thought it was the best show.
As Superintendent Varela said, A-plus, A-plus for that.
It was, it was unbelievable, it was fabulous to, to everyone involved, there is one note, and it will be in the happenings, but we're having, there'll be a flu clinic for all Milton Public School students in grades three through twelve, accompanied by a parent or adult at Pierce School on Wednesday, November thirteenth, from three to five, and our nurses will staff that flu clinic, but we'll get word out about that through every vehicle we can, starting tomorrow.
Great.
Thanks for offering that.
Thank you.
Next is the Chair's report, and it's the only thing that I have on here, is because we had to, at last minute, cancel our, our second October meeting, we rearranged our meetings, I'm just, I'm sorry, I can't find it in my stuff, it's in here, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Let me just look at it, oh, no, I can't find it. Okay, thanks, okay. So, we just, we moved around when site councils would be coming again, to be mindful that we're not too packed, we're not too packed at a meeting, but I don't know if you just want to skim over it and make sure that it looks okay for the, the upcoming dates, and if there's anything that we missed that you can, that comes to mind. I do, I do also want to be mindful that, well, we can talk about it, we can talk about it later, we can talk about it in either November, November, December, but, but this is just for school committee meetings, so this is fine, yeah, that's good.
Doctor Craighead? Oh, excuse me.
Yeah.
Well, I just wanted to put, put in a reminder that, that we will want to do another Facilities Advisory Committee report, but I'm not exactly sure which time, sometime between our next November meeting and December eighteenth, so I'm just not exactly sure yet-
Okay.
-what the time it will be, but I'll, I'll-
Yep.
Be sure to be-
Yeah, I mean, I think that those will be, that's not, that's not here, because that, that's reporting out of our advisory slash and/or subcommittee, which I think we always try to have at least two of them on a meeting, but these are just the other additional things, so when, when you feel ready, Ada, at either the twentieth, or the fourth, or the eighteenth, we'll put that on whenever you think is best, okay?
And if it's all right, on the twentieth, I'll bring the PS leadership back for that vote, and I wanted to ask Dr. Craighead and Dr. Pavlicek, are those finance dates in line for what you have to, we have to report out to the town?
I believe so, I believe so, yeah.
Ada, will we, and, will we have any, will there be any update on the strategic plan at all, before the year rolls out, just like, I don't, it doesn't have to be like the big one, I know-
Yeah, that's not on here.
Remember we did it last year, we just sort of updated the-
Yeah, we had a, we had a few of them.
Maybe, yeah, maybe we do it in the fall again, if it's just a jam-packed.
Right.
I just remember that at the end of last spring, it's like you'll-
Right, right, we did, yeah, we did, we did a few of them last year.
Or if there's one area that we wanted to, I don't know, think about it.
Right, yeah, thank you, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we could, we could, you could do that anytime between, because I just think that the spring gets too crazed, but, so anytime between January and March, I think it would be better to pick a date that, if we just do like a strategic planning check-in of where we're on track, or what changes you've made, so Ada, if you can think about what, which one would be best, and we can just put that in, that'd be great.
Yeah, thanks for taking that.
And we also have received many calls about next year's school calendar, so we're going to perhaps bring a proposal to you on January, on November twentieth rather than in January.
You've already gotten tons, tons of calls, and it's-
Oh, I've gotten calls too, or you're getting those calls from people saying, what's with next year's calendar?
Really?
Yeah.
Nope.
Because Labor Day is so late, so we might bring that to you in November, too.
Is it really next year, is it really eight?
Seven.
Wow.
Ooh, yeah, that's tricky then.
But it, well, we don't, but we start beforehand, so that's okay, but for some schools that are, you know, like Boston and other places, that we don't start till after Labor Day, that's really late.
I brainstorm with the PTO president, so we might have a proposal, but it's also contractual, so, by the twentieth, we might bring something to you.
Okay.
Imagine that the-
All right, do I, do I need formally vote on the calendar, or can we just check in? We don't, I don't need to formally vote, yeah, all right, you're good. All right, Finance Subcommittee, Dr. Craighead.
Oh, okay, so, we've had several, or at least two meetings since our last school committee meeting of the Finance Subcommittee, and we have been thick into presentations by various stakeholders on needs for the district for FY twenty-one, we've had some very fruitful discussions on the committee about what our needs are, and to speak to what Member Rosemaron said earlier, and that is, are you going to request teachers, the Finance Subcommittee sees a lot of those things as absolute needs, and so, we are going to absolutely request them, and we'll see how it plays out with the Warrant Committee and so forth, but we know that they're, they're necessities, they're essentials, for us to continue to deliver a quality education in town, so, we're still in the thick of that, but next week, we will bring our proposed budget to you for a vote. Alongside that, oh, in addition, we've also been considering, and this is just sort of a heads-up, we've been considering raising fees on, I wrote down, like, everything we've been considering, raising fees or, or re-tiering fees, but reworking the fees for athletics, clubs and activities, after-school enrichment, early school arrival, Camp Cunningham, summer enrichment, vacation camps, and other things, so we've been hearing from those people involved with those things as well, and we're considering all of that, and we will bring that to you for a vote as well. Okay, alongside of that, we received and voted to recommend approval of the first quarter report from Dr. Pavlicek, who's going to hit the highlights for you on that.
Of course, the highlights of the first quarter ends on September thirtieth, and we've only been here for a month at that point, so there's not a lot of high or lowlights at that point, for, school is barely back, so, you know, for your late-night reading, when you look through it, there were only, for, for most of the staff, teachers and aides, only two pay periods, so the majority of the salary lines are still fairly much unspent, because we really haven't had a chance to do that yet, the flip side of that is the majority of our supply lines are heavily spent, because this is when you buy textbooks, the materials are at the beginning of the year, we've tried to estimate and encumber special education costs, some of our maintenance costs and so forth, so they're showing sort of heavily set aside, if not spent yet, just to try to, in the case of maintenance, to try to protect ourselves from going over budget there, some of that may have been light towards the end of the year or whatever, but we just want to make sure we don't get in a position where we're struggling to make those work. In respect of what Member Craighead just mentioned, the, when you look through it, you'll see in the revolving fund section, the one fund that is showing a negative balance is the Summer Enrichment Fund, which spent more last summer than it, it raised in tuitions, not because of increased spending so much, the spending was almost identical to the year before, but because of different patterns of enrollment, particularly students, parents choosing to send their children for only one course, which was a new phenomenon for us, generally speaking, people signed up for four courses, you know, were there eight to noon, and, you know, had a day of it, but with people signing up for one course, it makes staffing a little more difficult and tricky, so, as we said, we'll be bringing a proposal forward next time to sort of address some of the issues surrounding summer, the Summer Enrichment Program, most of the other fees are sort of tweaking around the edges, but the Summer Enrichment is the one that really needs some attention. Beyond that, there are not too many things in here, one thing that is not in here that I'll just mention, is we signed an agreement today with Blue Hills Regional, who had put in some solar panels, and were past the exceeding what they can use, so we're going to be buying some of their excess power, basically eighty-five cents of the dollar, so that's a good deal for the rest of this year, so, that's, that will affect our utility budget positively, because electricity is, is the lion's share of our utility budgets, you might think heat is, but actually, we probably spend three times as much on electricity as we spend on heat for these buildings, it's, we are electric-intensive.
Yeah, that's interesting.
So, these are things we're looking at, so as I say, you can go through it, look at where we are, and if you have any questions, just let me know.
All right, so I'm, I would like to move to accept the first quarter report as presented.
Second.
Any discussion, questions, comments? Seeing none, I will ask for a vote, all in favor, that's unanimous, thank you very much, and the last thing I have to do is to make motions for the approval of various vendor warrants, I'm going to do seventeen and nineteen together, so I'd like to make a motion to approve vendor warrant number seventeen, payable October twenty-fourth, twenty-nineteen, in the amount of four hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents, and vendor warrant nineteen, paid, payable November seventh, twenty-nineteen, in the amount of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and forty-six cents.
Second.
All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you, and last, I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant number eighteen, payable October thirty-first, twenty-nineteen, in the amount of four hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-five cents.
Second.
All in favor? That's five, all abstaining, that's one, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay, next we have an update on health and wellness, Members Maron.
We met on October fifteenth, and basically, the, the goals that were established last spring, we're looking at them very closely and breaking them down, so the goals that were discussed at last month's meeting had to do with trying to look at the breakfast program and increasing participation in the breakfast program, and although we discussed all of the different schools and their participation in breakfast, the particular focus of the goal is to try to increase the participation at the high school, and getting kids to eat breakfast and getting the school on time, and given the earliness of the high school start, it's a lot more complicated to get kids to participate in the high school breakfast program, and Jackie Morgan was discussing different strategies and things that she was doing to try to increase the participation, including sending out a lot of information to parents through the principal's newsletters, Superintendent Zeeblast, to talk about the fact that if you qualify for free or reduced lunch, you also qualify for breakfast, so they're trying very hard to get the high school enrollment of, participation, I should say, up, and Jackie's going to continue to send out those reminders to parents to continue to try to increase the participation, and then we had a discussion about the Youth Risks Behavior Survey, and all committee members were given a copy of the data, as well as the presentation that was made to school committee on September eighteenth, and based on that data, several of the health and wellness goals were developed to address the issues identified in the survey, because those goals that Jackie has to submit have to be measurable, they were submitted back in March of two thousand and nineteen, so one of the goals is to communicate to the community the key results of the survey, which is to reduce some of the use of vaping and vaping nicotine and vaping marijuana by five percent in the spring of two thousand and twenty-one, and then they were, another goal was to offer health education and substance abuse prevention to all fifth- to all fifth graders, and to increase the participation by twenty percent of high school kids who are reporting either eating breakfast at home or having breakfast at school. And then we talked as a committee about how we can support the different teams in the schools that are working on the YRBS results and what we can do as a committee to support them. And we're going to talk about that more at a future meeting.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, next we're going to have a policy update. Dr. Donahue?
All right. So we have had one policy meeting since our last school committee meeting. Two items of discussion. First was our homework policy as a district and sort of a general look at our homework assignments. And this was a community-generated agenda item, and I think we had a very positive discussion on the levels of homework amounts being assigned and expected, and where we are relative to our peer committees, rather, peer communities. The general consensus from the policy subcommittee was that the school committee policy was, provided sufficient structure and scaffolding for the district. But some of the more targeted expectations at the administrative level could use some revision. And the superintendent and assistant superintendent, Dr. Spalding, are going to be working on that over the next few months and get back to us as a committee, and we'll have a discussion about that and moving forward. I don't know if anyone else has any, who was there has any?
That's great.
Yeah?
Yeah.
And then the second item that we talked about, which we talked about, our first grade placement policy, again, for the second meeting. And to remind those who weren't there and the viewing public, so this was, this discussion initially was prompted by our waiting list for the French immersion program over the summer. And we're sort of a post-mortem, if you will, as to is there anything that we could have done better or we should be doing differently to mitigate that? And the short answer is no. We did, we feel as though we're doing what we can, to the limits that we can, with regards to that issue. But the discussion sort of broadened a little bit, in particular, in the setting of our enrollment crisis, as sort of, we've talked about ad nauseam, it seems, but appropriately. This issue that we're dealing with touches all of the facets of our district and our program. So we will probably be bringing a revised district placement policy to the school committee, probably not at our next meeting, but at a subsequent meeting. We're going to have legal redraft it and try and get a clean copy for us to vote out of subcommittee. But the takeaway is going to be that we are, we're reaching a point in our enrollment at the elementary schools where, based on people's program choice at the elementary level, whether it's English or French, we are, we're running into flexibility issues, ensuring that people will be able to remain in the elementary school that they start in, at kindergarten. And that is largely driven by the enrollments at these schools, that we're getting to the point where we're running out of space to ensure that we'll have the same number of first-grade classrooms, for example, as kindergarten classrooms, and sort of the knock-on issues that brings up. So we are going to be revising the policy to permit ourselves the flexibility to have, to move families around if we need to, when we need to, because it's likely that we will need to be able to do that. And then the other facet of that conversation, sort of, generally speaking, we need to revise the policy to afford ourselves as a district the ability to move students if certain extenuating circumstances arise. And, you know, for the educational benefits of one student or a group of students, we need to, people need to move schools. So we're working, and that was at the advice of legal, that we add that language to our policy. So we'll be presenting a policy with those modifications and likely additional language regarding sort of generally being able to move students around if we need to, if that makes sense.
Great. Thank you. Next, we have in our packets the minutes from the September eighteenth school committee. I know I had Charlene email them to you so that you could read them through. I didn't know if anyone needs another minute or two to look through them. Give like another minute, and then I'll make a motion for people. Yes?
I had a couple of changes.
Corrections? Yep, go ahead.
On page six, the last, next to last word is, it is a work in progress, instead of working progress. And then the second, the page seven, third paragraph, starting with Dr. Pavlicek, say heavy capital projects, for example, rooftop units should be in there.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Not just rooftops, rooftop units.
I'm sorry, Ada, what was the, where was it on page six again, under facilities and advisory?
Next to the last word. It is a work in progress.
Oh, a work in progress, okay. Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to make a motion for approval of the Milton School Committee minutes of September eighteenth, 2019. You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay. All right, old business, citizens speak topic response. We don't have one. We've gone over the agenda items for the twentieth. Again, we will have the budget proposals from finance. We're going to have a preschool presentation at that. And we're also going to have our student advisory council come and either have a query of conversation or make a presentation on some information that would like to be updated on. Anything else that anyone wants?
That Pierce vote will come.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. And the Pierce vote on the D.C. trip.
We might have a calendar.
Yep, and then our new district-wide calendar for 2020, 2021, right?
Oh, yes. We might have that ready for you.
Okay. Is Mr. Redden and Ms. Butler coming back for the preschool presentation along with Susan Nocelli or?
They haven't finalized. Two's coming yet.
Okay. Okay, then I'd like to make a motion now to adjourn from our regular session and enter an executive session for the purpose of approving minutes and discussion of negotiation strategy for union personnel, and not return to open session, but to adjourn directly from executive session. It's a roll call vote. Member White?
Yes.
Member Rose Maron?
Yes.
Dr. Donahue?
Yes.
Member Everhart?
Yes.
Dr. Craighead?
Yes.
Dr. Verella?
Yes.
Okay.